Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call together this King George County Board of Supervisors Budget Work Session. I'd like to start off with an invocation. Any volunteers for an invocation? Ms. Granger and then the Pledge of Allegiance.
Before we just come before you again humbly, we thank you for the blessings you've given us. Thank you for your grace and your mercy. Thank you for your Holy Spirit and guidance that you provide through them. Just ask that you do be with us this evening. Please help us make good decisions, decisions that I'm best wishes as a candidate. Just give us strong understanding and discernment in what we should be doing in the way forward. All these things from your name. Amen.
Amen. We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you, everybody. Yes, Ms. Kupka.
I respectfully request I move to strike item 6C from this evening's agenda.
Second. We have a motion properly seconded. Any discussion? Being done? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes, so we are striking 6. Surely. And thank you, everybody, for coming out.
Mr. Dines needs to stay, I think.
Okay, continuing on, jumping into number two, recap of the current budget process to date. Mr. Miller.
I think, again, you may have stolen the thunder of 6C, but just to recap where we are, I don't know that I need to really do this for everybody, but so this process started in essentially November, December, when Ms. Hahn started working with the department heads and the department heads submitted their budgets. And then Ms. Hahn worked with them through December into January. We obviously had a snowstorm that kind of affected us. And so that item, you know, kind of delayed their process. So they began the process of starting in kind of January timeframe. And after the, we started working, you know, internally with me, February, March timeframe. Then, then you all got it, the end of March and, excuse me, the end of February. And so, you know, we've obviously arrived at this point last, two weeks ago, where you advertised the tax rate. And the tax rate is advertised. It is obviously the 68 cents for the real property or for the real estate and then the $3.25 for the property, excuse me, personal property. And so I think that where we wanted to come tonight was on number four with the, with my reductions that are proposed. That was never, it was kind of left open. And then re-give some time on number five with the schools budget. If there's any more follow-up that you wanted to do on that. And then obviously A and B of the travel and training policy and then office supplies and then what our next steps are. So if you'd like, we can put up the proposed reductions that I had, had recommended. And I think we just were not able to kind of come to conclusions. If you guys want to pursue with those or if you wanted to change any of those. Let's see, are these handouts?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have, Mr. Dines, do you have those?
Mr. Chair, may I ask a question in the meantime?
Go ahead.
So I know I saw the advertisement in the local newspaper yesterday, but I don't see it on the county website. Can we, is it somewhere on there? I'm not seeing it on the newsflash.
We can get that on there.
We, is it okay with everyone? We get that on the county website as well? I'm not seeing it on there. Okay, thank you.
So going back and looking at this. So I, we need to take one and pass one. Did Ms. Thompson get one? So I don't know if we're going to be able to pull that up, but if not, we can go through it. Okay. There it is. So if you want to follow along on the, on the screen, there's that way or you also have a handout. But so as we identified roughly $354,000 in reductions that could be applied, that actually would, it actually would increase by the 21,775 because we're taking that completely out, the NeoGov.
That, so it, is it, it's like?
It was 42, I thought, wasn't it?
No, the NeoGov, it, there's only like a couple of thousand dollars.
Oh, okay.
So.
So you're going to be a little higher in the maybe 356, 357 range. And so these are the proposals. We have met with department heads on this. You know, for, for example, the NeoGov project that Ms. Semillier has been proposing. And our, our approach is just pull this off right now, as I said, and let us do some more research, let us come up with some other ideas and then we can come back to you. We want to also investigate how, how broad it can be applied to the organization. The deputy fire inspector, I think we indicated that there was a kind of an understanding that if we needed to get the revenue in place and start working in that direction before we commit to a full-time position. And that's something that if we, you know, have the need to come back, then obviously we could bring that back and discuss that with you all. But the plan is to take that out. Let's see, couple other items on there. Parks and Recreation, we, about $50,000 in savings that we were able to identify moving some things around and also some of the equipment purchases that Mr. Clark had proposed. We came up with alternatives in that respect. There was $30,000 on the community development side. Those, that was the result of an abatement of a nuisance house process. And instead of it being like a placeholder in your budget, it would just not be there and we would handle it on a case-by-case basis. And I think that's how they, you know, had done it before and we're just advocating that you go back to that, it identifies, you know, actual savings. And so, you know, you may never have a nuisance house to come back to, but it has to come before the board anyhow. And so we felt that the best way to handle that was to not have an actual line item or a placeholder in Ms. Hall's budget, but to do it on a case-by-case basis.
I think that was, I talked about that and it was to come in front of us to get whatever it's going to cost $100,000 and then go back and charge those folks, the owners of the property to reimburse the county. So as opposed to, I guess, keeping it in a savings account type thing.
Right.
Just pay it out and get it, get it in the rear and get it back.
So again, I know that you all may have some other cuts and that's fine, but these were the recommendations. And I think that we showed that, you know, if you had your tax rates that, and there has been discussion, obviously, that you may go further down at the ultimate, when you ultimately decide on the budget, then this, but this 354, 355,000 roughly, you know, you're, you're even better shaped than what you were looking at last meeting where you were setting the rate at 68 and 325. So you're actually, you're in a better spot if you put these in place. I'll be happy to answer any questions about them.
Mr. Chair, I do have a couple of questions, if I may. Thank you. So for county administrator, deputy county administrator, cutting $30,433, you're not proposing to cut the position, you just fill it later in the fiscal year?
Right.
Okay.
And that was never, the idea that I had and, and I understand, you know, the need for that position was that it would be somebody within, that it would be a promotion. And it would be somebody that would continue and align responsibility, you know, like a department head that would have the deputy role and serve as a particular department head. It was never meant to be a standalone position that was going to be an additional position. It was always my intention that you needed to have somebody from within. And the main thing, obviously, is continuity and, you know, the whole succession planning that you need to have.
Thank you. And then my next question, economic development, the $5,000 for networking, marketing, sponsorship I'm looking at that department's line by line. And so it looks like that's kind of a combination of several line items, advertising and travel, conference fees and marketing. So they still would have about $17,000 in change. And then if we took that 5,000 out, they'd still have about $12,000 to work with. Am I reading that correctly across those two lines?
Ms. Hahn, is that?
So 3,600 is advertising, 12,500.
The 12,500, I believe, was, got to figure out which lines they.
And then the 5540 is travel, conference fees and marketing for $5,199. I just want to make sure across those two line items that there, we're not completely gutting their ability to get some stuff done.
No, I think we, we took it kind of like a, I guess I would say, we said, okay, we'll take some out of this and we'll take some out of this. It's kind of like a percentage based, I think, weren't we looking at when we were?
The 5,000 was to cut the networking, marketing, sponsorship opportunities in half. And then the joint Fredericksburg Regional Alliance to take that out of the budget. That's the 2,500 up there. That's what FRA stands for.
But it's not their support.
That was going to be my next.
For FRA, it was more, it was an event.
At advertising.
Right. It was an event that Mr. Minor was proposing to do through.
That was going to be my next question is, we're not taking that away from the FRA. We're still.
No.
And their needs will still be met too, because that's a regional, that there is an expectation that every locality contribute to, so.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right, I think that's all I had. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Chair. So Mr. Miller, is the included in your, in this current, not the cuts, but the, is it, are the employees at the minimum federal?
Yes, we did raise all of the salaries to what you had asked us to do. Thank you.
So we haven't done that yet.
Oh, okay.
Because you all have not voted on that. Last, at the last meeting, we gave you a, two different scenarios, what it is today before we make those changes. But until we are instructed that all of you have voted on that, we cannot go in and raise those.
Can you tell what the difference is? Can we tell the board? I think it was 26,000, I believe. Is that correct? To do that?
I thought we had a consensus like four times. I thought that was an agreed-upon thing. You need a vote?
Do you have the one where it's?
Is it a vote you need?
That would be, that would be good. Yes.
All right, do we have a motion?
We do. I'm trying to figure out how to phrase it.
I move to adjust the salaries, to address, to adjust any salaries of staff, of county staff, so that they would at least be at the.
Federal.
The federal living wage.
32,000.
32,000, exactly. So at a minimum of $32,000 a year salary.
Second.
We have a motion properly seconded. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I have a question. How many, remind me, how many employees are we talking about who are, how many? 10.
10 employees, roughly.
Okay, thank you.
And that was with or without benefits?
Well, that's 10 employees, but of course, all their benefits will increase too. The FICA will go up, the VRS will go up, the general life insurance, workers' count.
26 is without. That's just straight, that's what, that's what bringing the power of the wage up is 26,000, correct? Not the, not the benefits, which is fine. I'm sorry, I thought we had that included in there. Our fault. That's okay. Can we just call the question? I believe, I believe we told at the last meeting, 26,000.
Okay. Anything else? Right, we have a motion properly seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes.
Okay. So then with that, if you put that into the 354, 355,000 in cuts, then you're looking at about another 330, 329 that you would have in reductions by adding that back in, which is still very, very good, I think, obviously.
Mr. Chair, would you entertain a motion then? I would move to adopt the county administrator proposed cuts as presented, as well as incorporate in that the addition that just succeeded on the prior motion.
Second. We have a motion properly seconded. Any discussion?
Can you hear the motion again? I didn't quite get the last part of it.
Sure. I move to adopt the county administrator proposed cuts as presented and adopt in the additional costs that just prevailed on the prior motion, the federal living wage. Add that back in, take that out of the bottom line from the cuts. Yep.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, we motion properly seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes.
Okay, so we do have a placeholder on the agenda and I realize that at the last meeting, I think we had some direction in terms of what you wanted us to do in terms of the school funding. And we just put this on here if there was a desire to revisit that or a desire to talk about anything further. There's obviously nothing that we're getting out of Richmond yet, so unless somebody else knows some things, but we're not hearing anything happening today. So we're still in the same boat on that. And I believe, I don't recall, was there a motion? I think that you all were uncomfortable with the, it was like 19,8.
I was uncomfortable with the, the full request. So I did make a proposal of, I said anywhere between 19,438,881 to 19,865,430. And that was just looking at the House and the Senate budgets and trying to do the, I'm using the composite index to figure out what the local contribution would be on those percentages to hit, so that we hit that percentage. So those were the numbers I come up with. You're welcome to check me. I could be making a mistake, but I was just trying to get the ball rolling with an idea. And so that was my suggestion. And so with the Senate, I will also say that also removed, I did not include the infrastructure costs, the 2 million, 2 and 1/2 million roughly for school construction costs that they had in there, because that was, that's how operating costs. And so that's, that's what we were looking at. So my idea was to remove that. And so that's just for full clarity, that that's what I ended up doing.
Mr. Chair, I have a question of, Mr. Granger, could you just clarify where that number was? Just refresh.
Okay, so this, based off the composite index, which is the local contribution that the state suggests each locality should provide based off a number of factors, which include total land value, the amount of revenues from commercial activities, things like that. They have the suggested rate that King George should provide 38.05% of the school budget. So using that as my idea, I took the numbers and I looked at the Senate. And so I, the proposal was 34,790,458. That also had the school construction fee, so I subtracted out the 2,447,122 from that 34,790. And then what I did is I figured out how much the local contribution would need to be so that the total, what we provide would be 38.05%. And what I came up with for the Senate was a local contribution of 19,865,430. I did the same thing with the House request. There was no school construction costs in that, so I didn't subtract anything out. I just took the, the amount that they were, the House had proposed, which was 31,648,849. And again, working my way to get that 38.05%, I came up with 19,438,881. So, and like I said, please feel free to check my math. I make mistakes, so I'm not offended. You want to go back and make sure I didn't miss something?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Collins.
So in regards to discussion on that figure, I would be at 19,200,000.
Have you all, you haven't heard anything?
I just looked.
Nothing.
I've just looked while we were here and they have a special part in the legislative system for anything coming out of the committees and nothing yet. It'll say, it says they'll post any updates here. I've also searched the media today to see if there's anything. And the last thing I got, I, I'm also on the governor's list serve, and the last thing I got was two days ago that the governor was talking about the budget and how we're, we need to get something done. And I haven't heard anything today.
I didn't mean to cut you off, Ms. Hahn. Thank you. Mr. Chair. So we collectively, as the governing body, have not, to my knowledge, done anything to petition our representatives in Richmond. And so I wondered if there'd be consensus of the board to direct staff to send correspondence that the chairman could sign on behalf of all of us, requesting some forward movement on the budget and letting them know how difficult it is for us to try to work through our budget process due to all the uncertainty in, in the state budget, but particularly with regard to our schools.
Collins? Okay.
Thank you.
Something else?
I was just curious about the other members and what their numbers were for the schools.
Well, mine's kind of right in line with the rest of what you all have said, so I mean, I think we're all fairly close.
So I know for the tax rate, we went high. I know we could do the same thing here because obviously we're not voting. In my understanding, we, we could still change that after, after the fact, right? Am I mistaken in that understanding?
The tax rates?
No, I'm sorry. The allocated school amount.
Yes, I mean, you don't, you can change your budget up until the very end.
Yes, when we adopt it.
Right.
So I would say for planning purposes, do we want to go on the high end again and just have that as a placeholder and then work our way down from there? Meaning, for me, the high end would be 19,865,430. Again, just as a suggestion.
Mr. Chair. So right now, with the continued uncertainty, for me, the high end for me would be the fiscal year '23 Senate, the 20,436,625.
20 million?
Yeah, and that's high. I'm not saying I wouldn't change my mind, but for a placeholder, if that's what we're looking to do, that's where I would be right now.
I was originally going to just say 20.
My magic number was 19,4. But if we want to say.
If you need a consensus, I'll do 19,4.
Well, I mean, if, like Mr. Granger said, I mean, just as a placeholder, like worst case scenario, say 19,8, maybe?
I would, I would do 19,8.
19,8 and then just as a number to, so we can all work with and then go, and we can move from there if need be.
Well, I'm, I'm just a little concerned that if you put in a placeholder, 19,8, then the school board will be, will more than likely be listening to the meeting and they will have their minds set on that number. So. will have their minds set on that number. So I would think it would, it would be better off doing a little lower. And if we could make it higher, then there would be a plus instead of taking the wind out of the sails later on.
I would be amenable to 19,4 then.
19,4?
19,4.
19,4?
Guys, if you have a consensus, that's fine. I'm still at, I think, that I don't know.
Okay, let, as the placeholder, let's use 19,4. And we can adjust that whenever we hear from Richmond, just to help you guys continue. Okay? Okay.
The last item on there was just a follow-up. You've moved, you've removed item C, travel and training. So I know there were questions about that. And I know as, as Ms. Cobb indicated, that the numbers for this year were a little higher than the previous years because one, there was no travel during COVID. And we obviously just came out of the COVID kind of period, you know, I guess, early fall, late fall of last year, 21. But I know that the budgets in the two previous years did not reflect any real travel or training activity on the part of department heads. I will say this, look, I, we put the budget together. I trust those department heads. I believe that this is not a organization that there is a lot of waste in travel or training. Most of the travel that they do is associated with training that you have to have. For instance, fire officials have to have a certifications and they've got to go. They usually try to find regional or local opportunities when they do that. So that's, that's where I, I stand by the travel that's been put in here. I trust the departments to, you know, they know what, you know, these, these are folks that really watch their budgets and, and they're going to do everything they can to make sure that their budget is put in place. So I, I understand the concerns about the need for a travel policy and, and Ms. Hahn is ready to, you know, get to work on that. And we will be bringing that to you. I would hope that we could get it before the first of July. It's all a matter of her finishing up the budget and then starting that process. But we know that the board obviously has a travel policy and, you know, we can go to these other communities and get their travel policies and things like that. And I understand the concerns and, and the, the need for assurances that, that we aren't having a blowouts on travel. But I can tell you confidently, I've been in a lot of organizations and I've, these folks don't travel. They, they really don't. Unless it's absolutely necessary.
And just an update on that, Ms. Sumail from Human Resources and I did meet today and we started talking about a policy and she and I are going to work together to create one for the county.
So without creating, Mr. Chair.
Collins?
So without creating an entire policy, which needs to happen, which should have happened long ago, can we not set a, the lodging rate at no higher than the normal government per diem rates for, for those without having to?
That's what we do now. We look for those, for lodging at those rates. Also, many of the conferences that we attend, they get a block of rooms for the participants at the state rate, at the government rate for those. So I don't think you will see individuals going above that rate already, even though it's not a written policy. It's something that all of the department heads are, are very good stewards of the county's finances and are make sure to, to do that. So it's kind of been an unwritten, an unspoken policy, but department heads do that. I've had some individuals who were sending someone someplace and call and ask me, and I give them the website for the GSA calculations, which is the state and the federal rates. And they've been administering those in their departments.
So some, some of my understanding is a tad different than yours. That some, some folks, when they, they travel, they are getting rooms that you wouldn't normally be able to get in the government rate, such as waterfront rooms and so forth.
Well, I'm, I'm happy to put out a.
Can I finish?
Yes, sir.
So also, you know, I, I'm very familiar with the state travel policies. So if you have an opportunity to go to Las Vegas for training, or you have an opportunity to go to Bowling Green, Virginia, which one would you rather go to? Las Vegas. But what would be the most cost effective? Bowling Green. So I think there needs to be some, some controls on those too. So I'm just telling you what I've understood.
Well, what I, what I was going to say is I'm happy to put out a circular that says to all the department heads that we want you to do the government rate. And if you don't have the government rate, you need to show us evidence of why, so that we can have those kinds of things. And then we can all adopt that into a, a policy. I agree with you that we don't have a formal policy yet, but we can get one. But in lieu of that, I can put something out that'll be sent to all the department heads.
Questions? Thank you.
And I guess the last item on there was a, was a discussion about office supplies. And, and just if I can maybe refresh the way we do it, you know, so everything's online now. Everything is a, is through like Staples or Office Max or Office Depot. And, and the process is, is handled, you know, by each department. Finance obviously has an oversight of the process. They're watching everything. And I think that there was a question about could we ever have some kind of a central store? And I think the problem that King George has is there is no facility that you could have where you would want to store your, your, your items like that. I mean, we have a lot of open space, but there's a lot of places that, you know, are identified as potential use by this county for something. Bunch, the Ralph Bunch Building, the, the old middle school. So I think that, you know, first of all, get to stock up to that is a real big transition. And so I, I think again, we, we, we really don't, that's a, that's a move in a, in a major direction to establishing a central purchasing office, you know, procurement through finance handles all the purchasing and, and, and things like that. And so if you create some kind of a central store, you know, you're, you're probably a good year to a year and a half away before you would have that really established. So I, I don't know that that's a direction that, that is, is beneficial for the county at this time.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Collins?
So it was never a suggestion to have a central store. I don't know where that came from. It didn't come from me. The suggestion is, and is to buy, buy in bulk purchases for all, all the different departments. What's happening now is wasteful. Bottom line. You can buy much cheaper in bulk. You can do, go through your procurement, just like you do everything else. There, you don't need a central store. You just need to be a little smarter and not, not as wasteful in these supplies.
We will certainly take that under consideration and, and look at how we do things.
Well, I'm hoping that the board will do more than take it under consideration. I'm hoping they will come up with a consensus or at least a directive within the next 60 days to have a little bit better procurement in supplies. Lena, you want to add something?
Yes. So Mr. Collins, so we actually, because I used to be the procurement manager, we reviewed that process a few years back because we looked at doing it more centralized and buying in bulk. And we, once we did the research, like paper, for instance, we thought it may be better for us if we got it in bulk from BW Wilson, which was a state contract. Once we reviewed the prices of that, and then we went and looked at Staples Advantage. Staples Advantage is who we have our contracts through now. We did the cost comparison there. And what we have the ability to do now with Staples Advantage is cost comparison. So let's say if I order paper from BW Wilson, I can get five boxes here for this amount. If it's cheaper or if it's more, vice versa, at Staples, now I can get it cheaper at Staples versus BW Wilson. So we've done the cost comparison for all of our office supplies. So what the offices are doing now is going in and comparing BW Wilson, Staples, Office Max, Amazon, and they come back and they buy it from the cheapest person.
Of my experience with the schools, Mr. Chairman, another shot at this. So my experience with the schools was they weren't, they were doing the same type of, of procurement and changed over to buy in the bulk. And it was much cheaper. So I, I'd have to disagree with that.
Mr. Chair. So then that still lends the question, though, where does this stuff get stored? And I get that your request, Mr. Collins, was never for a central depository or to have a quartermaster or anything like that. But then you still have to have somewhere to store it. And if you're buying bulk cases of paper, say, that takes up a lot of space. So that, that would be my concern. It still goes back to, well, and where do we put it?
And it's conditioned to space. It's not Bunch or the old middle school because that all goes bad. I'm sure they are looking at what they can to cut costs down. If Ms. Cobb says there are comparing prices and they're getting their cheapest price, I mean, I, you know, I have to trust that they are.
Cheapest price under the, the type of buying power. So if you have a different buying power, you can get it cheaper. No, I don't think storage is, is, is the huge problem. Not like you buy, it's not like the schools, the amount the schools buys.
Mr. Chair, I, I would, I would disagree with that because when I did the infrastructure, infrastructure study and I toured a lot of the buildings, I saw bulk items. I don't remember if it was the schools or the counties, and they were not stored properly because they were not in a, a good environment. And they were going moldy and then thrown away. So it is, to me, it's very important to be in the proper environment if you're going to buy in bulk.
So just, Mr. Chair, so the, the one that you saw was the middle, down to middle, old middle school, the paper, and it was because the roof leaked.
That is not the only location. But that's not, I'm just saying they need to be in a properly controlled environment if you're going to buy in bulk for you, so you don't waste the taxpayer money.
Well, I, I think the other thing to, to think about too, it's like the internet. I mean, things are stored in the cloud. And when you have a contract with Staples or say Office Max, you're buying it and you are under a contract that may last an entire year. And you're buying, and you draw down on whatever that contract is. So in a sense, they're now the central stores. They're now the bulk, they hold your bulk items. And you say, okay, we need, administration needs five reams of paper. The price isn't changing from six months ago. It's, it's the same price. And that's what we, we monitor and that's what finance is monitoring. So it's not going to necessarily change.
So are you telling me you have a contract, let's say with Staples or whatever, supply store for 250,000 reams of paper and they bring it to you as needed?
No, we, we order as needed. So they would be at the same price. So I don't know what, how, you know, you break it down. I mean, a ream of paper is, say, $3. I don't know. You, you get 50 of them at once. You're going to get 50 of them delivered to you at $3 a ream. I'm just using an example. And then six months later, you're doing the same thing. You've never really changed that. You could order it all and store it somewhere. But I think as everybody has said, there's no one, there's no real where, or place where we can store that kind of bulk goods.
That, that, this is very elementary. This, I have nothing to do with storage, the bulk storage of where we're going to store it. So you're telling me that you can't do a, a year contract with whatever company to buy 250,000 reams of paper and then you get them as, as needed?
I'll defer to my financial advisors here.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question. But I'll just say this, because we have the ability to price match, we can ensure that we get the cheapest price for all of the products across the board.
I think what Mr. Collins was asking is if you just do it in one big bulk, they store it, we, we buy it at the first of the year and then you just draw down on it.
We still, without an inventory control specialist, that would not be the ideal way to run it. That will basically be saying, okay, we're just going to put it here and then it's a freefall.
Anything else?
No, I just reiterate that I disagree with the processes happening now. I think it's wasteful. And that's all I'll say. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else from anyone? All right, Mr. Miller?
That would be it. I guess the next steps would be setting up a public, well, not a public hearing, but setting up if you wanted to reserve a meeting. If you want to just leave it as if we find out from the state, if they report back that they have a budget and it's going to impact us, then we have this, this kind of a meeting again to kind of wrap it all up. Your public hearing is set for the 17th. And of course, you can reduce tax, the advertised tax rates, like you said, and you can make changes to the budget if there is some desire to make changes to the budget.
And also, you won't, we won't have the true picture on the revenue side until they do something. And that's why we didn't bring another sheet tonight of the revenues because it was, you know, everything that I put in there so far was a best guess effort to try to come up with something, but until they make a decision. So my thoughts are, once we get those revenue numbers from the state, we can plug everything in and then work from there to balance the budget, to make sure that we have enough revenues to cover what we have in, in the budget. And then have that information, I'm hoping to have that information before you have your public hearing on May 17th, so that you can make a fully, with all, with a true picture before you make a final decision on what you advertise, I mean, what you determine the tax rate will be after that public hearing.
Chairman?
Yes?
Question. So I truly don't understand how, I'm hoping you can explain it to me. So Spotsylvania has set their budget, staffers set their budget, they've set their tax rates. They've given their school their, their budgets. And so many other counties have. Why, why can't we, why, I don't understand why we're in a different realm.
Some of these localities are, they've gone ahead and set their budgets based on their best guess estimate. And after the fiscal year, after a budget is approved by the state, they will probably have to come back and have more work sessions and do a budget amendment and make changes at that point.
Thank you. Questions from you, since you're our only rep over there?
Mr. Chairman, I just add something with regard to what Ms. Hahn said. And anytime we amend. And anytime we amend, it's my understanding, if it's still the same way in the code of Virginia, anytime we amend our budget, our operating budget by 1%, we have to have a whole nother public hearing. So, and I mean, if we're talking about, last year it was a $97 million budget, we're looking at maybe $100 million this year. 1% is $1 million. So I, I see your point, Mr. Collins, but I personally like that we're trying to wait as long as we can. But we did set a public hearing, so we're not scrambling with getting out late tax bills because nobody, none of us like that. And none of us like to hear from the citizens about that, certainly. But I, I like that we're being cautious and we're taking our time and we're trying to get the data as it comes in so that we don't have to go through another process. Because certainly it would be more than 1% of our budget likely that we would have to amend.
And I did talk to at least one other division and they flat funded the schools, I believe, and to what it was last year. So that's what they used in their budget picture was what was last year because they don't know what the schools are going to come back with on the revenue side. And like, and Ms. Kapka was correct, if 1%, we would have to advertise a public hearing. And I'm not sure if that has to be out for just 14 days or longer and possibly 30 days.
And Mr. Chair, I'm talking to some folks at GWRC on Monday. They fully are aware, since they passed their budget array, that they probably will have to come back in and amend it. So that's just the choice they made. We're just making a different choice.
Okay. With all that, that and done, you, something else?
What I was going to say is I will keep an eye on the General Assembly daily to see what they're doing and maybe keep you all posted if I see something out there so that we can, so that you all can decide when you want us to come back with that balanced budget to talk about and then to advertise a public hearing on that piece of it as well.
Okay.
The other thing is, is we'll have a letter for your signature to your legislative representatives encouraging them to come to conclusions and...
Hurry up. Right, okay, thank you. Motion?
I move to adjourn until Tuesday, May 3rd at 6:30 PM in the boardroom.
Second.
Motion privately second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We are adjourned.